I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the Commissioner meeting of August 11th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Sussex County Community College Performing Arts Center in Newton, New Jersey. Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Director Fantasia.
Here.
Commissioner Fasano.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo.
Here.
Commissioner Yardley.
Here.
At this moment, I would like to ask you all to join me and stand in a moment of silence in a salute to the flag. Tonight, we are remembering Chicago Police Department Officer Ella French, who was killed in the line of duty. Please keep her in your thoughts.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is our republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four is the public statement. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on May 5th, 2021, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, Star Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute cell phones and other electronic devices. Number five is the approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass. Number six, proclamations, certificates, and presentations. And we have one this evening. We are recognizing Eagle Scout Anthony Tulick, who's here with his family. Father, perhaps? Welcome. And we're going to have Deputy Director Fasano do the presentation.
And as some of you, I'm sure you're aware, we love our Eagle Scouts here, and we love recognizing the hard work it takes to be an Eagle Scout here in Sussex County. So this Eagle Scout Award reads proclamation. Whereas Anthony Tulick, a member of Boy Scouts of America, Troop 283 of the Patriots Path Council, sponsored by St. Francis Church in Vernon, New Jersey, has earned Eagle Scout's highest rank. And whereas Anthony has been involved in scouting for 13 years, he has held the positions of patrol leader, assistant patrol leader, and senior patrol leader. Anthony is an avid outdoorsman. He loves hiking, camping, being on water, and while also being an accomplished student. He will attend Sussex County Community College next semester on the NJ Stars program, where he plans on pursuing a degree in business. And whereas Anthony's Eagle Scout project involved building a memorial sign and sitting area for his local ambulance squad, Vernon Township Ambulance Court. And the sign was created to honor their deceased members, along with the founding fathers' names. It is located at the Mountain Building in Highlands Lakes. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners trust that the scout oath in law will continue to reinforce Anthony's ideals and contribute to his exemplary code of conduct as an adult. And be it further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, which is Anthony Tulick, continued good success in scouting and life. By the order of Board of County Commissioners, Dawn Fantasia, Commissioner Director, Anthony Fasano, Deputy Commissioner, Sylvia Patillo, Herb Yardley, and Chris Carney as commissioners. With that, Anthony, would you like to say anything?
I just want to say thank you guys for letting me come over here and accept this award. I'm truly honored and humbled. Took a lot of hard work, but I'm glad I finally made it, and I look forward to the next step in my life. So thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And this year, we have seen, I would dare say, a record number of Eagle Scouts have come through. And even with the challenges of the pandemic, the community service projects that you all have gotten done collectively across the county, nothing short of impressive. We're really proud of you, and thank you for coming here tonight and allowing us to recognize you and celebrate you. Thank you. So we are moving now on to number seven, which are public hearings. There are none. Number eight, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item only. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. Please state your name, municipality, and the topic on the agenda for the record. So I need a motion to open the floor for public comments.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass. The floor is now open to the public for agenda items only.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Marie Springer. I'm from the County Open Space Committee, and I'm here in support of Item 10F, I think it is. Yeah, I'm here in support of Item 10F, hoping that you will pass the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need any more information?
No. To clarify, is this Resolution F establishing the Trails Grant Program?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Just for the sake of the public, I know it might be a little difficult to hear, it's on permanently preserved open space lands, adopting rules and regulations in support thereof, and authorizing monies from the Sussex County Farmland Preservation, Recreation, and Open Space Trust Fund for this purpose, to establish the Sussex County Trails Grant Program.
Are we good? Anything else? All right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else come forward to speak on agenda items, I need a motion to close the floor to the public.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Okay, number nine is commissioners' comments, and we're going to start with Commissioner Carney.
Thank you, Director. I have a couple of updates. Municipality of Barrow, of Augsburg, the drainage, there's a drainage pipe repair in two locations on Main Street, County Route 517, between Brooks Flat Road and Passaic Avenue. There's multiple cross drains within Main Street. They're deteriorating, and that's leading to settlement and maintenance issues. So they will be closed for night work and permanently closed through that day, whether, from 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM on Tuesday, August 10th, the 11th, or 12th. So one of those days, so be aware if you drive through that area. Work will be conducted over a complete road closure and detour using Brooks Flat Road, Plan Street, and Passaic Avenue. An update with our striping. As you recall, concurrent with development of our 2021 traffic striping program, the county became aware of an epoxy paint shortage jeopardizing the successful completion of our 2021 striping program. Recognize the importance of the lines in our rural county routes. The Board, based upon recommendation from the Department of Engineering and Planning, authorized an amendment to the June 9th meeting agenda to add a resolution which provided authorization for the purchase of traffic, striping, and pavement marking services. The timely evaluation response have allowed the 2021 program to be expedited, and to date has resulted in the striping over 90 miles of county routes. The final 11 miles within the 2021 program are anticipated to be completed early next week. The culmination of work, which will allow for the successful completion of this project and the recognized safety enhancement provided to our roadway users, exemplifies operations of core county government service. The NJ, for county aid, 2022 county aid, NJ DOT has announced a fiscal year 2022 county aid program, under which Sussex County will receive in 2021 county aid allotment of $5,14,293. The county aid program is funded through the Transportation Trust Fund and represents a critical component of the county's annual capital transportation program. It's nice to see some money coming back from the TTF. On a side note, things that I've been doing, which was nice, Director Fantasia and I were able to go to the Six Annual Addiction Walk at the Franklin Pond this past weekend. It was a great turnout, and Director will elaborate a little bit more when she speaks. I also was able to attend the Sussex County Food Pantry fundraiser, which probably produced about 150, 200 people, had five bands over at the Carriage House in Frankfurt, which was nice, because the food pantry in Sussex County does wonders throughout the county, raising funds and distributing food throughout the county. I was able to attend opening ceremonies at the fair, which was nice. I did not get to see the Queen of the Fair, because that actually went a little later than my nine-year-old's allowed to stay up, but it was nice. It was, a lot of people were there, a lot of people were at the fair. I was able to go to a lot of different booths, and I hope everybody keeps in mind that all those booths, bless you.
Thank you.
Are fundraisers, you know, from the beer tent to the rotaries. So it's important to go to those places and, you know, give them a hand with their fundraising. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Commissioner Patillo.
Thank you. From Environmental Health, this year, the Division of Health inspected 758 food establishments, 127 recreational bathing facilities, including lakes and pools and public campgrounds. We'll also be offering a Child Health Conference Clinic. That Child Health Clinic will be held on Tuesday, August 17th, from 9:30 AM to 12:30 PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing. That's at 201 Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg. The clinic offers complete physical exams, screenings, and age-appropriate immunizations for children ages zero to five years old that are without health insurance. Please call 973-579-0570 at extension 1211 to schedule an appointment. Next is the annual Veterans Picnic, and that's going to be August 14th, this Saturday, at the Sussex Fire Department. It is not too late to register for this event. You may call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555 tomorrow to attend the picnic. I also had the pleasure to attend the Farm and Horse Show last night, and it was so much fun to watch all the families that were there, the children playing the games and enjoying the rides, and everybody enjoying the variety of foods. But there's one thing that I always look at, that I enjoy when I go to the fair, and it's in one of our buildings as you just walk in, and that's the quilts that people have made. They actually rapple them off, one off for a dollar. You can put in your dollar, and beautiful quilts. But when you see the colors and the design, and you think about the hours and the skill that it takes to make these quilts, and they hang them from the ceiling, so you can't miss them, and you can see how big they are, you can see all the different designs and the beautiful colors, and I just want to give credit to, I'm not going to say women, because I don't know that men didn't do, because men do quilting as well now, but whoever did the quilting and took the time to bring it to the fair and hang it up, I just want to thank them. I enjoy watching what happens, and I enjoy just looking at the beautiful colors and thinking about the skills that people have that can still make these beautiful items. So it was nice to see that.
Is that the end of the?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Everything's short in August.
I was surprised. That's why. Okay, Commissioner Yardley.
Oh, thank you. I had a opportunity to visit the fair a couple of days, and it's really nice to see families out going through there. Today was EMT, Fire Department's Volunteer Day, where the people got into the fair for no cost, and it was recognized that for all of the activities that they perform. I thought that was a nice gesture of the fairground. This morning, I attended a tribute to the troops held at the fair. The ceremony was honored to honor our active and retired military members and highlighted veterans organizations and active, that are active in the county. We have many that provide not just food, but clothing, suicide watch, housing. And I would like to ask the Board to see if we could work with Faith Vodin to get those organizations on the county website under our Veterans little section there, so that people, either they can either click on that, and they can go to the other websites. They are not-for-profit, and I think that they serve our veterans up here, and it would be nice to have that, those things on the website. So I'm going to ask if the Board doesn't object that I just have her contact, either our administrator, who can direct her, you know, who to go to, how to work that out. Okay? I think that's a great thing. And it was interesting to hear the services that these people do, and the one organization, zero money goes for management, so all the money goes directly for services. So, and also Aldo Sayer, Aldo Sayer, very active 100-year-old veteran. He's a veteran of World War II and recognized for his years of service in US Navy and was US Navy Reserve, and he's been contributing to volunteer work for about 70 years, or more. I know that he started with the original fairgrounds. The fairgrounds were originally up in Ranchville. And it was really interesting to sit there, he was talking about, a little bit about his life and stuff, and it was a great opportunity to sit there and talk with him and give him the resolution of recognizing him for the services that he did and for the fact that he's 100 years old. God bless him. And in addition, there were seven veteran quilts given out as part of the, they have a quilt program for veterans, Veterans of Valor Program. I was, and Mr. Sawyer, and all of our servicemen and women, we want to thank all of them for the services that they provide, that they gave to the country. It was just an honor to be there and watch this event going on. That's my report.
Thank you. Sounds like the heavens are opening. Holy.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'd first like to begin my report by welcoming our attorney tonight. Oh, my goodness, Mr. Fasano, this threw me off, and I skipped right over you, but I'm still going to welcome our attorney tonight before. I did not make mention of that at the start. We have Katie Fina with us tonight. In all serious, in all seriousness, though, Mr. Steinhardt, our heart goes out to his family. There was a death in the family, and he needed to leave the state this evening. So thank you for coming and covering our meeting, and our thoughts and prayers are with the Steinhardt family. So Commissioner Fasano.
Well, thank you, Director Fantasia, and I hope that all of you can hear me. Thank you all for joining us this evening. I will keep my report brief today, and I'll start where a lot of other commissioners have left off by saying how awesome it was to attend the Sussex County Fair last night. I had the opportunity to join Commissioner Patillo, and I think we had a really fun time last night. I will be there. It was so good that I will be there for a few more days this week, and it truly is a fantastic event. I encourage you to check it out if you haven't done so already, and there's truly something to do for everyone you are with. Please visit sussexcountyfairgrounds.org for more information and event schedules. Another website to visit is sussex nj.us/covid19, which is your one-stop shop for everything COVID-related in Sussex County, including the latest news and figures, resources, at-home testing options for all county residents, and vaccine scheduling, including at our own location, at our own Office of Public Health Nursing on Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg, that offers vaccinations every Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. The Sussex County Chamber of Commerce is happy to announce, and so are we, that Sussex County Day is back this year, and it will be Sunday, September 19th, from 12:00 to 5:00 PM at the Sussex County Fairgrounds. Sussex County Day is a free, family-fun day that celebrates everything that makes Sussex County special, and this year, the event is dedicated to honoring our community heroes. There will be a classic car show. There will be an apple pie cook-off to see who has the best pie in Sussex County. There will be a chopped Sussex cooking challenge, which I understand is for professional chefs, and that's why I was not allowed to participate. But it's a great event, and it's free, and I encourage you to attend that one as well. And finally, the Sussex County Library System is expanding their digital offering. Press Reader and All You Can Read digital platform of over 7,500 newspapers and magazines is available free to all Sussex County Library System cardholders. You can read content instantly or download it for later. It is a very cool software, and that you can customize that software to your taste, to your needs, to what it is that you're looking for from the library system. And to get started, all you have to do is go to sussexcountylibrary.org and follow the instructions for access through your internet browser, or follow the links for the appropriate app store to use Press Reader on your smart device. So pretty cool to see our library system taking another leap into the 21st century. And with that, I thank you all for coming, and that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. So I'm going to start out this evening with an update from the Department of Health, and if you see me up here going back and forth, I'm just getting a little bit of new information. I had some questions that were sent to me, and I was communicating with Carol Navaret to give you the most up-to-date information. So first and foremost, Public Health Nursing is offering those free COVID-19 vaccinations at the fair between 2:00 and 4:00 PM. The Department of Health reports that Sussex County residents were administered a total of 153,986 vaccines. We still have the free at-home testing kits that are available through Vault or LabCorp. And the most recent New Jersey Department of Health COVID-19 activity level report indicates our region is considered as having moderate activity due to a spike in the Delta variant COVID-19. The weekly COVID report dated August 6th, for the prior seven-day period, indicates an average of 19 cases per day, 1-9 in Sussex County, for a total of 14,909 cases, representing about 10.6% of our population, and there are no reported new COVID deaths. The total deaths in the county stand at 310. Now, as you're aware with the Delta variant, our epidemiologist Lama Shaddad reports that the Delta variant is the dominant variant in New Jersey. While there's no specific data provided for Sussex County at this time, the northern region, so it's our northwestern region of the state, of the samples that have been tested, it has represented roughly 80% of the tests. So, so you're aware, not all COVID-positive tests are tested for this variant. There are certain criteria that the Department of Health recommends. So specimens are sent to Public Health and Environmental Laboratory, PHEL, for variant testing. And recent travel to or from countries that report emerging variants of concern, a reinfection, anything that's associated with a cluster outbreak, cases occurring after being fully immunized, or hospitalization or death in an individual who is fully vaccinated, those are the cases that get priority to be tested for the Delta variant. Now, there's approximately anywhere from 16- to 24-day delay from the collection of the specimens, and the actual report back from the New Jersey Department of Health. Variant testing is done from the original specimen, and it's sent from a hospital. So basically, that's the, just the trajectory of how it's working now between our county and the state and the labs that are testing for this. Now, again, online, I know there's some misinformation that may be posted. There is no current outbreak reported as a result of the fair. There is no current outbreak reported as of three minutes ago at the fair in any capacity. So if you see that, just so you're aware, there is no outbreak in connection with the state fair and Sussex County Farm and Horse Show as we sit here this evening. So again, to talk a little bit about the changing, the face of Addiction Walk, it was a great event that we were able to participate in, myself and Commissioner Carney. We walked on Team Guerrero in memory of Mark Guerrero, who is someone in Franklin Borough who had passed, and friendly with the family, and he's an individual who did pass after battling addiction. And how it works is when you register online, you join a team, and there's various teams from all across the state and even other states that came and walked. There's over 40 teams altogether that walked, and about 700-plus donors online. You could either participate virtually, or you could participate on-site. On-site, we had about 500 walkers that showed up to the pavilion there in Franklin. And the latest numbers, you know, as of that day, we were in the low $70,000 that was raised, but as of today, $82,500 was raised for the cause, which is record-breaking this year. Becky Carlson was there from the Center for Prevention and Counseling, and we had Senator Oraho came and spoke. We had Father Greiner speak there. We had a representative from the Prosecutor's Office as well, and every municipal police department and the County Sheriff's Department was represented in helping assist blocking the intersections for all of the walkers. It was such an amazing community event. There were poignant speakers, individuals who had, you know, lost loved ones and family members who spoke and told their stories about addiction. And there was something so sobering, when you first came up on the field, there was an enormous wall, and there were about 23, 24 panes, and each one had 100-plus individuals, photos of individuals who had succumbed to addiction. And it was one of the most powerful moments to see that many people together in memory of their relatives, absolutely, I don't know, it just took your breath away. And there was also the new mobile unit that goes around from town to town that helps teach about addiction resources, addiction recovery, and they teach how to administer Narcan as well to families and just different residents, if you're interested in that, and there's free resources that are provided. And if you're not familiar with the CLEAR program, it was started right here by a police chief at the time, Chief Michael Richards. It was his brainchild, and now multiple police departments across the county are involved. And it allows for a way for someone who's battling with addiction to go to one of these police stations, or to go to the center and have a conversation and seek help without fear of prosecution or, you know, any kind of retribution. So it has helped, you know, countless people. It's growing, and it's truly a model for other areas in the state and in the country. So, you know, I always try to push that out from a social media perspective, and on our pages, it's so important that you share that and you spread the word, because addiction doesn't pick and choose. You know, it doesn't have, you know, it doesn't have any preference or bias. It can happen to anybody at any time. And just know that there are resources out there available for you, and I'm very grateful that we participated in that this year. Also, to talk about something very happy at the fair, they had their Queen of the Fair pageant after not having it for a year, and you know, that's kind of my thing. I love it way back in the day, and I won't date myself and say the year, but I used to participate in such activities, so I always get excited about Queen of the Fair. So this year, our winner was Ms. Green, Jennifer Ahmad. She is a student at TCNJ. She double majors in Interactive Media and Spanish with a minor in Music Technology. She's a flutist in both the TCNJ Concert Band and the Pep Band. She's a member of the Service Fraternity, Alpha Phi Omega. She's a student ambassador and a volunteer at Mercer Street Friends Food Bank, because she's down there by Trenton for school. And they also do something very similar to what our county does with the backpacks, where students get to go home with the food. And also, they recorded read-alouds for children, because they weren't allowed to read to them face-to-face, so they were able to do that online. And right now, she's also a media production intern for Pearson, which is an educational media company. So she is quite a dynamic young lady. She's a fabulous pick. And also, we'd like to congratulate our first runner-up, Ms. Hampton, Autumn Kilduff. Second runner-up was Ms. Hamburg, Vanessa Hasbrook. There was a People's Choice Award, and that was Ms. Franklin, Samantha Karpowitz, who's close to my heart. Her father's on the fire department, and she volunteers frequently at all different fire department fundraisers ever since she was knee-high. So she's a great kid as well. The additional finalists were Ms. Frieden, Rose Homentowski, Ms. Andover Township, Rachel Davis, and Ms. Wantage, Sierra Walsh. So I just want to thank, again, the committee that put that together. It's really, I don't know, it's just a great event, and it's a tradition, and I think it's wonderful to see so many accomplished young women, you know, be recognized. And the last thing in my report tonight is just something hot off the presses, that we were that we were just in receipt of at the county a little after 4:00 today. So again, I apologize for the scrambling, but being that we're only having the one meeting in August, I want to get everything to you. You know my pet peeve is people who play around with their electronics during a meeting, but I'm working, trying to pull the most recent information for you to get it to you. So here's something else that's new. There is information that came to us from NJAC, Executive Director John Donadio concerning the 911 funding. Now, we've been aware for a very long time that New Jersey really is a serious offender of diverting 911 funds to other programs that actually those funds are prohibited to be applied to. New Jersey, again, has earned the distinction of being the worst offender in the entire country of diverting 911 funds. And they sent us a resolution from the New Jersey Association of Counties where they would like us to definitely stand together and demand our fair share of funding for our 911. Now, just to give you a slight background on this, the state of New Jersey collects annually from consumers over 120 million in telecommunications surcharges as the 911 system as an emergency response fees. So when you see that on your bill, whether Verizon, Sprint, whatever you happen to have, and you see that fee that's collected, that's how much is collected in telecommunications surcharges. So this state has collected over $1.4 billion in those fees since 2006. And 11% of those monies have been spent on eligible expenses as reported by the state to the FCC. This is not something new. This isn't something that this board just fell into and said, "What is this?" This has been an ongoing fight from state legislators going all, trickling all the way down to the municipality and trickling right down into your homes. You're paying for this, and your money is being diverted to something entirely different that is not allowing the 911 systems in our state to be upgraded and function as they should. 89% of that funding since 2006 has been misspent and diverted elsewhere. So every county is on this for the New Jersey Association of Counties, and they are asking us to stand together and pass a resolution with them. So again, this is new. I know Mr. Poff has sent it out to you. We haven't had an opportunity to, you know, discuss or act on it, but being that it came at the right time for our public meeting, so the public is aware that I can speak for myself, but I'm 100% behind this. I don't know if any other commissioner has any commentary on that that they'd like to add, but this is one of the most outrageous abuses for something that is so important to the people in our state. So there'll be more discussion about this and discussion than an action at our next meeting about acting on this along with the other counties. And any further information that Mr. Poff gets or would like to send her that I received an email, we can certainly share. And that concludes my report for this evening. So we are now moving on to number 10, which is the approval of our consent agenda. We have Resolutions A through F. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. If any commissioner would like to remove an item to be considered separately, please do so now. So I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda, letters A through F. And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass. Number 11, the approval of minutes from the regular meeting, July 28, 2021, and executive session, July 28, 2021. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting and executive session.
Still move.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Number 12 is appointments or resignations. There are none. Number 13 is resolutions. We have Resolutions A through J. So at this time, I need a motion to adopt Resolutions A through J. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion for any of the items?
So you have to speak up.
Commissioner Patillo, did you second that one?
She made the motion.
You moved it. I'm just asking the clerk, did you receive? Thank you.
Okay.
Well, over this, it makes it very loud. Okay, any discussion? Terry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Pasano?
Yes.
Representative Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Pass. Number 14, awards of contract change orders and bid. We have letters A through E. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determine that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. I need a motion to adopt Resolutions A through E.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Pasano?
Yes.
Representative Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Okay, number 15, we have financial. It's a resolution for the payment of the bills list dated August 11, 2021. I need a motion to pay the bills. And a second?
Second.
Terry, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Pasano?
Yes.
Representative Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Number 16, personnel. It's a resolution authorizing the personnel agenda of August 11, 2021. I need a motion to adopt the personnel agenda.
Still move.
Second.
Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Abstain.
Commissioner Pasano?
Yes.
Representative Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Number 17 is the administrative report.
Thank you, Director. As we have a number of items in executive session to discuss this evening, I'll keep my report brief. I thank you for mentioning the information from the Association of Counties concerning the 911 funding this evening. And I would ask the board to consider the resolution of support in regards to the legislation that has been drafted. That resolution number is A5962, and that legislation would permit funds collected from the 911 System Trust Fund to be appropriated for the purpose of paying eligible county costs for providing and maintaining 911 emergency services. So I appreciate the board's consideration of that in the weeks to come. As far as library services, I'm very pleased to report that we continue to receive compliments about county library services, most recently hearing a comment from a resident about the availability of pickup service that has made dealing with the pandemic, and I quote, "a thousand times easier." So thanks to all of the library staff for the work that they've done in being able to continue to provide services during the pandemic. And just to comment on the road resurfacing contract that the board has awarded this evening, a note of interest is that this contract will pave almost 35 miles of county roads and was funded almost 75% of the cost of the contract from grants. So that is excellent that the county had received just shy of $8 million for that resurfacing, and will go a long way to continue to make investment in the county's transportation infrastructure. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And next, the county council report. I'm going to give this to you.
Thank you, commissioners. Earlier this evening, you received a brief report from county council's office discussing several issues that we are presently working on or with outside counsel. If you should have any questions for us, we can answer them, and then we can provide any further guidance during executive session.
Thank you. Number 19, unfinished business. I did speak with, for under unfinished business, I did speak with Mr. Steinhardt earlier today before he had discovered that he was not coming this evening and received the bad news. Therefore, the amicus brief update is going to be coming to us via email for you to take a look at, so we can review. And then if we have any questions as well, we can certainly direct them. But for the sake of the public, there was an amicus brief request for us to support an individual who is submitting one in support of 2A in a different part of the state, and they did approach the county and ask for our support. So if you recall, the last time, they had submitted, and they were waiting for answers to come back. The answers did come back from the opposing side, so we are going to receive those, and county council will guide us in the right direction as to what our support of the amicus brief would look like. So I have that information for unfinished business. Number 20, new business. Okay, that brings us to number 21, which is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. You're asked to state your name and municipality for the record, and again, this is for non-agenda items. So at this time, I would need a motion to open the floor for public comment.
Still move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the floor is now open to the public.
Good evening. I'm sorry, Kenneth Collins from Andover Township. I'm here tonight because I discovered this afternoon, about 2:00, that there was a deadline at 4:00 p.m. to submit questions regarding Tennessee Gas Pipeline's expansion of the compressor station here. The public, the notice was posted a week ago, and the public was only given a week to discover the notice and send in questions. And I really don't feel like that was adequate, and I'm here to ask you if you would extend that period for another two weeks to accept more comments and questions from the public regarding the expansion of the compressor station. It was a real surprise for me to see that, and then again, to not even hear it mentioned by anybody here tonight that this was going to happen on September 8th, right here, that Tennessee Gas is coming back. So if you could take that under consideration tonight, I'd really appreciate it if you would extend that comment or question period. On top of that, I'm here to ask you if there's been any progress on the draft resolution that I came and presented a few weeks back. I think it was over a month ago now. And you had mentioned that you seemed to support it, and that you wanted to see what your attorneys had to say and if there was anything that could be done in that regard. And lastly, you know, there was another thing, actually, regarding the Tennessee Gas Pipeline. I was wondering why it's being done the way it's done. We were allowed, as the public, to come in here and just ask them questions before, and now they've rescheduled, but we have to submit our questions by 4:00 today for a meeting that's not until September 8th. I don't really think that's right. It's not really giving the public the chance to speak to Tennessee Gas Pipeline and ask them questions like they should be able to. And the last thing, of course, was that you're not providing any sort of virtual attendance option for the public for these meetings. And we're just going to keep coming back here and asking you to do it, because it's the right thing to do. You can argue against it all you want, but there's all kinds of places, all kinds of government bodies are now doing it, because it's been helpful for the public to attend these meetings. And they want to include their community. So I wish you would include your community in the same manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bree Springer-Bernan speaking on behalf of myself. I'm actually a college professor that teaches fraud, waste, abuse, and corruption in government, and I'm very interested in this issue with the 9/11 funds. And I'd like to get as much information on it as possible, if you would, please, personally.
I'm sorry, you're asking about the 911 funds?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're, I'm sorry, you're a college professor? I'm having such a difficult time hearing you.
I understand. I'm a college professor. I teach fraud, waste, abuse, and corruption in government. And I'd like to get as much information on the 9/11 funds issue as I can. So if I could give you my contact information and get as much information to research that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. If you submit, Terry, what do you think the best way is? Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Patricia Green. I'm from Wantage Township, and I am the past exalted ruler of the Sussex Elks Lodge. I'm here this evening to discuss a memorial that is coming to the county of Sussex. It is the Moving Wall. Some of you may not know what that is. The Moving Wall is a half-size replica of the Vietnam Veteran Memorial that is in Washington. It's been traveling the country for 30 years and has never been in Sussex County. So the Elks and the Legion Riders of Branchville and Franklin are bringing it to Woodburn Park from September 9th through September 13th. Oh, I'm sorry. This is a memorial that is open to all of Sussex County residents. It is open from dawn until dusk for residents and in the evening after-hours for the veterans that would not like to attend while the public is there. I left on the table this evening a flyer with the, not events, the ceremonies that are going to be held. We are going to have a ceremony each day while we were there, while we're there, from 9/11 ceremony to a memorial ceremony to honor the Sussex County Vietnam veterans that passed, as well as the other 58,000-plus Vietnam veterans that are on that wall. And on Sunday, we're going to have a POW MIA recognition ceremony as September is POW MIA Recognition Month. We are looking for volunteers. We are looking for scouts. We're looking for moms, dads, school-aged children. It's just not for the Elks and the Legion Riders to be there. We want to make this a big Sussex County community memorial. So I would hope you guys would take this. I do have another form that just explains a little bit more about the memorial. I do recommend, because it's so involved, if you are interested, to go directly to the Moving Wall website. That will give you in full detail what this memorial is about. There is "Save the Date" on the back of the pamphlet here. If anybody has any questions, would like to volunteer, I have business cards out on the table as well. Take them. Just drop us an email, and we'll respond as soon as possible. If you are interested in volunteering, please let us know as well, as we do have a sign-up link for that where you can volunteer. It is the four-day event. We will need many volunteers throughout the community. Thank you for your time, and thank you very much for having me here to speak this evening.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else come forward, I would need a motion to close the floor to the public.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Pass. The meeting is closed to the public. I would like to just address a couple of things that came up in public session. First of all, thank you again for coming and presenting to us. And I do know that there was also a call with all of the mayors from each of the municipalities to be able to become acquainted, you know, more with the project. And we're really looking forward, and we're honored that it is coming to Sussex County. We look forward to being, you know, participants in it. To address some of the questions, I can't answer all of them, but I can answer or address what Mr. Collins did ask about. Mr. Collins, it's a pleasure to see you and actually see what your face looks like. I see you online, but I never get to see you in the flesh, so it's a pleasure. What I would like just to address is when Tennessee- What I would like just to address is when Tennessee Gas was coming the first time here, they were coming, and the mayors actually of the towns had submitted questions for them to answer. And for the public, it was very similar to our open public session. So in other words, they were giving their presentation, answering the questions from the mayors, and that was their interactive portion. And then the public was welcome to comment, but it wasn't a Q and A with the, with the individuals. After we saw the public response, we spoke with Tennessee Gas, and we said, "People have a lot of questions." They said, "All right, collect all the questions from everybody so we can address what the public's questions are," because maybe they didn't go to their municipality and make it aware. So they left it open for the week. They said, "Send it out, leave it open for a week and see what the public says." I don't disagree with you maybe that that week span was too short. It certainly cannot hurt because again, this is us sending it to them. I have no problem asking them for an extended period of time to collect more information from the public. And thanks for bringing that to our attention because honestly, it would have fell under the radar under the assumption where they said, "Well, let's open it up." Okay, try to get questions from the public for a week. So we can certainly ask them that. I have no issue with that. I don't know if any member of the board has an issue leaving, you know, why the questions have to close, acceptance of questions have to close today. I honestly don't understand. It just seemed to be a window of time. They said, "Why don't you collect questions for X amount of time?" So if it's okay, Terry, if I could ask you if you wouldn't mind, you know, reaching out and at least extending it another week to have the public come in? I mean, I don't know when they need to get the questions to be able to, you know, respond. Commissioner Carney, I look like you have something.
No, I agree. And I was actually going to comment on Mr. Collins as well. I have no problem taking your questions and giving them to them myself. I have no problem with that. But if we, if we just did a week, they probably have a deadline because they're going to prepare, so.
No, I know, but it's September 8th, so I mean, I don't.
I think a week is sufficient.
I think adding another, I mean, I don't think that's a ridiculous request at all.
That's, that way you can get your questions in if there's anybody else.
His questions came out.
We're, we're not hiding nothing. We're open. We want to be transparent about the whole thing, so I'd rather get it out there and nobody complain later on.
And again, I don't anticipate like, you know, the first time they were giving their presentation, then public is open for comment, but the first time it wasn't going to be Q and A between them and even the mayors that came or the public. So it's going to be very similar to that. But this time, I guess the benefit is, we realized how many people came and said, "Can the public directly submit questions to you?" Because it seemed like the public had multiple questions, you know, and multiple concerns when they came. So that was kind of how that all came about. So I think that that's fine. Again, I'll follow up with Mr. Steinhardt about the medical marijuana initiative and that resolution that you sent in. And anyway, that's the information that I have right now, but I just wanted to respond to you for that. And if the board doesn't have a problem, I think we should definitely extend the open, you know, submission of questions for at least a week and see if it's okay with, with, you know, Tennessee Gas.
I would go a week, yeah.
Okay.
Good. I just, I also have a question. For the Moving Wall, is there a donation spot on there? Because I know that's expensive and you were looking for donations.
Yes, there is still a donation back in touch to that. The board has already accepted the donation, so I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question for you as well. Is it, will there be a box there? I mean, there's security around the clock from what I understand. Would there be a box there that you could put donations in onsite?
I believe donations from there on out, the donations will not go towards us as the committee. And the committee has a regular memorial here. The rest of the donations will go directly to the Moving Wall for their, they have expenses too because they travel, I think, eight months out of the year. So whatever is there will go towards the Moving Wall.
Understood.
That would, you know, if the town should have.
Got you. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we are at 22, which is reminders. If you'd please check the county website, www.sussex nj.us for our meeting schedules and all the meetings throughout the county. At this time, we are moving on to number 23, which is executive session, a resolution providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12.
Whereas the subject matter is about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B. And whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated. Number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege, which is Eastern Federal Lands Flap Grant, and matters relating to the employment relationship, FLSA evaluation. And I missed one. I apologize. Item two is matters where the release of information would impair the rights to receive funds, DCA Division of Housing and Community Resources, CV, grants. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public. And be it further resolved, here's the big question, that the Board expects to or not to take formal action. What will it be?
I don't believe the Board is taking formal action at this time. I don't believe there's anything actionable that we are voting on this evening.
Okay, so without taking formal action, they will not be returning to open session and therefore will adjourn from executive session.
Thank you. So at this time, I need a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session.
I make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now in executive session. I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. Please get home safe in this horrific weather that we're hearing outside.